I'm seeing like that from people, but this is pretty much a full house.
Took me a lot to get up there and change it.
Mr. President, it is 7:00 o'clock whenever you're ready.
Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting of the Beloit City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
All councilors are present, and I will note that Counselor Keys is on virtually.
Thank you. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand at this time?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
This evening, we do not have any special orders of the day and announcements, but we do have two public hearings under Item 4. Item 4A is consideration of Resolution 2021-83 denying a conditional use permit to allow indoor sales of alcohol for the property located at 550 West Grand.
And Community Development Director Julie Christensen is here to present.
The applicant is proposing to construct a liquor store in the space currently occupied by a laundromat on the property located at 550 West Grand Avenue. This property is Zoned C2 Neighborhood Commercial, which means that they need a conditional use permit in order to have alcohol sales. Staff and Plan Commission recommend denial because the applicant fails to meet three of the findings of fact. We believe that there is substantial evidence indicating the proposed use is detrimental to or endangers the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare, and the use will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. Finally, approving this conditional use will substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood of the subject property. A public notice was mailed to residents within 150 feet. As a result, we received three emails that are included in the staff report, and we received a call from a resident at 1002 Portland Avenue that Hackett Elementary informed students and parents about the request, and the resident was not in favor of the proposed use. We also did have a resident come to the Plan Commission meeting, and we had Maggie Kasek come from Youth to Youth to urge Plan Commission to recommend denial, which they did. Included in the staff report, I won't read it to you, but there were a number of studies cited which indicated that adding liquor to this neighborhood where it's near a school and high-density housing may endanger public health, safety, and welfare by likely increasing occurrences of crime and disorder. The police department also submitted a memo outlining their concerns with the alcohol application, given the other activities that are occurring in the neighborhood. And as a result of all of that, Plan Commission did recommend denial of the conditional use permit. So the resolution which is included in your packet tonight is a resolution denying, not a resolution approving like it usually is. And I don't know, Mark Prashil can say whether I have touched on kind of why Plan Commission recommended denial, but...
Let me begin by making a motion that we concur with the findings of fact and the Plan Commission's recommendation.
Before we do that, we do have to have the public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing?
Yes. Well, at this time, yeah, that's okay. At this time, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this item, please come forward at this time? Second call, third and final call. The public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I will repeat what I just said.
Madam Clerk, do you have the motion?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a first from Prashil, a second from Duncan, to deny a conditional use permit that would allow indoor sales of alcohol for the property located at 550 West Grand.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Before we go to Item 4B, I will be recusing. I serve on a board of a nonprofit, so I will be stepping out of the room. Vice President Keys will be acting as president for this agenda item.
And Vice President Keys is virtual. This is a public hearing to solicit input on community development, housing, and homeless needs in the city for incorporation in the 2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
And Community Director, Development Director Julie Christensen will present.
The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that we provide an opportunity each year for citizens to give input on public housing, community development, homeless and housing needs, and to prepare an annual action plan in order to qualify to receive CDBG funding. Any needs identified should be considered when the City Council sets local funding priorities at its next meeting. We will also provide that information, any information provided tonight to CDA, as they will make a recommendation to council. And then those local funding priorities will be included in the applications for CDBG funding, which you will see the recommendation from CDA later this year. And so this, tonight, is just to listen to anyone who comes to submit comments, and there's no action taken tonight.
Thank you, Julie. So the public hearing is now open. Anyone interested to speak on this item, please come forward. All right, second call. Third call. Comments? All right, the public hearing is now closed.
And I would just ask that somebody would inform President Anderson that he can rejoin the meeting, and we'll just wait just one moment. We have reached Item 5, which is public comment.
We've reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may become before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold your public comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy and respect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting?
There was one email comment sent that was from Jenny Hoopel, 1300 Strong Avenue. "Respected council members, the ChemToole disaster was brought to my attention as a hazard in Beloit that could be as bad or worse. One of my customers owns the tire repair shop on Copeland. He says that next door to him, the property owner, had a tenant who filled the property with used tires and left them there. I mean, filled. My customers complained to various city departments and got directed to the fire department. The fire chief said it's one of his top concerns for fire hazards in the city, and he's working on it. Meanwhile, if those tires ever catch fire, it could be an even bigger disaster for Beloit than ChemToole, as tires burn for a long time once they get going. The tire stockpile is right in the middle of a residential neighborhood and has no action, and as no action has been taken by the fire department, I wanted to alert the council of this danger. As a resident and store owner in this neighborhood, I'm very concerned about the impact this could have on our city, and even though these tires aren't burning, they are providing an ample breeding ground for mosquitoes, which is a hazard to the residents in the neighborhood." And then she attached a screenshot of the satellite image for this property and said thank you for your attention to this matter.
All right. Are there any members of the public that submitted a form to address the council this evening?
I do have one form, and it is from Tia Johnson. Tia, if you would approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Teresa Johnson, 1621 Indian Road. Last time I was here, I spoke about lead in drinking water and some of the negative effects of lead poisoning and the Pew Research and HHMI cost analysis of lead remediation in drinking water. My takeaway message for you was, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Tonight, I am here to tell you that once someone is exposed to lead, there is no cure. There is clear scientific consensus that there is no safe level of lead in drinking water. Low doses of chronic exposure have been found to cause cognitive, behavioral, and physical damage in children, and high blood pressure and kidney disease, and increased risk of cancer in adults. There is no medicine, treatment, or cure for lead exposure. A child who has been exposed to lead may have behavioral problems, depressed IQ, cognitive issues such as brain damage, all issues the child will have for life. Prevention is the only cure. Lead is a generational toxin. A female who is exposed to lead as a child or teen will have lead sequestered into her bones. As a pregnant mother's body extracts calcium from her bones to nourish the growing embryo, the accumulated lead will get into the growing child's system. The EPA's actionable levels for lead is 15 parts per billion. The FDA's level for bottled drinking water is less than five PPBs. Canada's also five PPPs. Scientists agree 10 parts per billion is high toxicity. California has set its goal for child drinking water to be no greater than .02 parts per billion. Replacing all plumbing is costly and slow. There are other forms of remediation such as phosphates and additives to coat pipes to prevent leaching. Some communities are also using electrical means to force lead ions into molecular forms. In 2017, Beloit had two of three 31 readings exceeding the EPA limits of 15 parts per billion. One was at 470, the other at 27. Most readings were below 7.6. I know and trust the water from my faucet is below the EPA limits, but I encourage people to test the water from their own tap to know what they and their children are being exposed to. The city of Beloit should encourage local doctors to inform expectant mothers and all parents about the harms of lead in drinking water. Landlords should be required to test water before every new tenant and periodically if a child lives in the unit. Thank you.
And I don't have any more signed up at this time, so...
Would anyone else who did not fill out a form wish to speak tonight? Second call, third call. Public comment is now closed.
Item 6 is the consent agenda, and all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Any council member like anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda consists of Items 6A through 6L. Motion by Levy, is there a second?
I'm second.
Second by Blakely. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And there were many agents in the room, and you are welcome to stay, but you do not need to. Because nothing was pulled off, your item was approved. Item 7 is consideration of Resolutions 2021-89 approving late renewals of alcohol beverage licenses for license period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Just real brief, we have to renew our licenses every year for our liquor establishments. Many of those came before you on June 7. These are the remaining ones that we need to get out by the end of the month, and the ABLCC recommended all of the applicants that were on that four zero.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Forbeck, is there a second? Second by Levy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to ordinances, 8A is consideration of a substitute amendment, number 1 for ordinance number 3703 to create Sections 13.085 and 18.02 Sub 2M, and to amend Sections 1802 Sub 1 Sub D and 1802 Sub 2 Sub B of the Code of General Ordinance of the City of Beloit pertaining to electric scooters, and this is second reading.
We do have City Attorney Krieger here, but we won't have her present again unless there's any questions. So with that, we'll get a motion on the table. Is there a motion? Motion by Levy, is there?
I'm second.
Second by Duncan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under appointments this evening, there will be two different readings. The first is a group that has five that will take by one motion unless you want them removed, and will take them separately. But to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, we have incumbent Martin Dench to a term ending June 30, 2024. To the Equal Opportunities Commission, we have incumbent Gina Stevens to a term ending June 30, 2024. To the Municipal Library Board, we have Gloria Heiss, Juan Carlos De Salas Argan, and Kevin Young Jr. And to the Traffic Review Committee, we have Michael Charmida, replacing Carol Fryer to a term ending September 30, 2022.
Is there a motion?
I so move. Lots of moves.
We'll go motion by Forbeck.
I'm moved to, am I moving? Am I not? I'm moving to approve all the appointments.
Okay, we'll go Blakely, and then we'll go second Forbeck. Any discussion?
No, it's great.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second motion is to the Board of Review, who you interviewed this evening, which is Sean Allen, who would be an alternate to the Board of Review on a term ending December 31, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
We'll go Prashil and then Forbeck as a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10 is counselor activities and upcoming events.
Tonight, we'll start with, we'll go with Vice President Keys tonight.
Thank you, President Anderson, for the Parks and Rec and Conservation Commission. The last meeting that we had, they did decide that there would not have an official tour of the parks this year. Given the events and change of everything with 2020, they have felt that they have not had that many new things to highlight, as well as staffing, seasonal staffing remains a challenge. And so it was unanimously decided that that will be on hold for this year. They did want to highlight that the splash pads are a new feature, and they are open, and they are fantastic for family fun and cooling, especially in the heat, both at Summit and Vernon Park. And then, as far as my personal report, this last month, I kept a lower profile, given that my family and I welcomed our son. And I want to thank my fellow councilors for highlighting this and welcoming the new addition. And I want to just say that we are very blessed and thankful for all the support of my colleagues and this community, and I look forward to gradually increasing my in-person events and attendance soon. So, thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you. Counselor Forbeck?
Yes, I had attended a long, very interesting SLATS meeting this morning. And besides really emphasizing the long-term projects that are being decided about all modes of transportation, not only, of course, in Beloit, but in Southern Rock County and Northern Winnebago County in Illinois, there are some projects that are in the planning stages, and one of them is to try to seek some kind of relief about Milwaukee Road, the speeding that happens as people are coming in to the city on Milwaukee Road. So that project is in the planning right now. Also, projects that are going to be started, at least this year, will be Henry Avenue and Cranston Avenue, which will really be welcomed, I know. And so I just want to give kudos to our city staff. There really is just a tremendous amount of coordination with all the funding, the federal, state, and local funding that has to be done, reports sent, et cetera. So being on the SLATS committee has been a real learning process. And then I just want to send out kudos to Beloit Literacy for Life for having their wonderful bookmobile that is going around town and giving kids, getting a free book. On June 23, they're going to be at Gaston Elementary from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And since I was a teacher in my younger years, I have to say, if you've never seen the look on a child's face when they get given a book, I'm telling you, you're missing something. It's just tremendous, and again, kudos to the wonderful people in our community who have really gotten this Literacy for Life going and continuing to go. So that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Levy?
Good evening. Just a couple things. First of all, I'd like to thank Mark Perry, the Community Action staff, Beloit Police Department, Beloit Fire Department, city staff, and other organizations for two great events at Vernon Park and Summit Park. Very well attended. A lot of information was shared, so I greatly appreciate that, and I think as we continue to do that, you'll see the community getting more involved in things that's going on. Also, to Tracy Dumas and the Rising Stars, great Juneteenth event. I was able to stop out there, but it was a great event. The community, once again, was coming together. A lot of people out there, a lot of vendors, so it was a great time. Want to also welcome back Mark. He's been, had a little surgery, and so we want to welcome him back, and we're sure that we'll be hearing from him a lot. So he's been gone for a while, so he's got a lot to make up for. And then also, something I want to discuss or commend the chief and the Beloit Police Department and the entire community. As we know, we've had a couple episodes of shootings over the last couple months, but I want to thank the community for stepping up and helping the police department, and notice I said the word "helping" the police department in solving these crimes. I think a lot of times, people will tell us, what is the police department doing? Or what is the city doing? To which I reply, we need the citizens to speak up. So if you see something out there that's not right, or if there are crimes going on and you know the people, the only way we're going to get these solved is we all have to work together. So you can always work with the police department. They have anonymous numbers you can call, but I just want to commend the community and the police department for a job well done and getting their stuff done. It's kind of bad to even report on that, but we also criticize when it's not getting done. So I think when the community steps up and helps, you see the outcome. So I want to commend everybody for that. And then, Chief, if I could just ask one thing, a lot of the residents on Yates Avenue, they're talking about people speeding up and down the street. I know you get that all over, but there's a couple residents that's usually calling me a couple times a week, just saying, can we get some patrol over there if there's somebody in the area that can just drive through a little bit more frequently to try to slow their speeders down on that street? I told them I would pass it on to you, so I apologize for doing it here, but I just wanted to kind of get it to you when I saw you, so... And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Counselor Blakely?
Thanks. Thanks, President Anderson. As a member of Beloit Library Board, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Beloit has a full roster of summer activities for the whole family, adults included. And I also want to mention that although it's been a nice, cool day today, we are entering summer now, and the library is one of Beloit's cooling centers for people who may not have air conditioning or adequate ventilation in their homes. So please keep that in mind if you know someone who might benefit by spending a few hours at the public library. Last week, on another matter, I attended a training session created by our clerk treasurer, Lorena Stotler over here, that was very helpful. It was covering some things I know, some things I've had experience with, about parliamentary procedure, how to navigate the city's website, and that kind of thing, but it was a good reminder about how to easily access state statutes, for instance, and city records. And there was, she called it Parliament 101, part of the meeting, about meeting protocol and so on. I don't always get it. My first time out, I stumbled through, but I do understand the rationale and the rules. And that kind of stuff just disappears into the background, so we can have efficient meetings. So I really appreciated that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Prashil?
Well, it's good to be back in this chamber, and I was here for the Plan Commission meeting last, at the last Plan Commission meeting. It was my first time in. But I think, to start off, I would like to recommend a couple committees to people that are, we've got a lot of vacancies on the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, also known as ABLEC. There's three vacancies for residents and one vacancy for Tavern League rep. And then another committee that needs some members is the Traffic Review Committee, which according to this list, has two vacancies for members. So just those two are standing out to me right now. I happen to be bond both of them, so I thought I would mention that. I hate having to make a quorum on those committees. I'd rather see the citizens' input. I am finally getting out a little bit more. I'm kind of limited in how long I spend out in the public, but I was at the farmer's market on Saturday for about an hour, and it was really nice. And it's good to see a good turnout. Hopefully, the hours will stretch out a little bit more as we get through the summer. Starting this, I'm going to try my first public thing on Wednesday this week at Community Action in the afternoon at 2:00. I'll be giving tips on how to take better photos to a group of kids that are on a summer photo art exhibit project. So this is something I'm going to, I'm going to give it a shot, and I hope nobody has to call the guys, Chief Pease's guys, or anybody to come and get me. But I should be okay. I've done this before, and I'm looking forward to it. I just love seeing the light bulbs go off with the kids when they, when they realize that there's more to, you know, it's an easy thing to pick up on once you try it. I just love that aspect of it. So, all right, that's the end of, that's the end for now. So, thank you. It's good to be back.
It's good to have you back. Counselor Duncan?
Can you hear me now? Okay, just want to make sure. Yeah, first, I want to echo the sentiments of my fellow councilors. Mark, we really missed you while you were out sick, and we know it was so hard for you to stay away. You're so committed to this, to our Beloit community, so we're so happy to have you back tonight. Just want you to know that. As far as my council report, I've been to the Beloit Farmer's Market and Fridays in the park. There was a $7 lunch that was provided by Marion Houston's. That was really good. So, that said, I also want to give a special thank you to Shana Elamine and the Downtown Beloit Association and city staff for all their effort. It was also great to see our police department command staff and police officers there. Some were on foot and walking through and rejoining in the crowd, so that was great to see. I also had the opportunity to participate in the School District of Beloit Portrait of a Graduate work group, and I also attended the Greater Beloit Economic Development Board meeting. And on Saturday, I was honored to attend the Juneteenth Freedom Celebration at Riverside Park, as well as the community cookout at Summit Park with our chief sales and police department and city staff. I would like to just say thank you to everyone that participated in both of the events. There was Chief Sales, Chief Pease, Mark Perry, Community Action, the Rising Queens. I'm going to add in, because I'm talking about both events now, the Juneteenth Celebration and the Summit Park event. And also, I want to give a shout out to Regina Hendricks. Hendricks, Michelle Hendricks-Nora, Michael Bell, Gina Stevens, Tracy Dumas, all the business vendors that were there, our Parks and Recreation Department, Elizabeth Kruger, Sarah Locke, Terry Downing, and everyone who helped to make these events so successful. Also, thanks, it was so great to see so many members of the public and children join in. It was also at the event, I actually had the opportunity to watch my granddaughter step with the Nightingale Steppers. So it was just, there was also earlier that morning, there was an event where the choir came and sang. So at all the events, they were just so wonderful. And also, at the Summit Park event, they even had the splash pads where the kids could go and play. They are so wonderful in our community. So if you haven't taken advantage of those, if you have kids, please take them out to play on the splash pads. And another fantastic idea that our city staff had was they had the vaccine tents set up at the event. So that was wonderful. And there were people that, and children who were able to get the vaccine. Of course, they had to have the permission of their parents, but that was so wonderful. And also, in closing, I want to thank Jen Hall, Mindy Coons, Frank McKernan, and the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation for their work with the expansion of Spraytech in Beloit. And the announcement, it was shared that Spraytech expects to hire 50 employees in a 75,000 square foot facility for a total investment of $30 million in Beloit in the next three years. This is something that we should all be proud of, because this is a definite big win for the city of Beloit. We are on the map with the growth of our Gateway Business District, and I am looking forward to more projects. So again, thanks to Jen and the team. And with that said, this ends my report for this evening.
Thank you. Well, I'll pretty much echo what everybody else said, but I really wanted to just mention how it felt normal again, the community conversations. It was great to see kids playing, running around, and getting in the splash pad. Definitely at Summit, I was way more tempted to jump in the splash pad, because it was definitely hotter that day. But it was really great just to see everybody there. Chief Sales did a great job talking to the community. And I think we have, see a lot of faith in our police department right now, and a lot of the feedback that was given. You know, I think we can definitely say we have a great police department here in the city of Beloit. I also attended the Juneteenth Celebration, and it was great to just have so many vendors there, a lot of community members, a lot of friendly faces that I haven't seen in over a year. So it was nice to finally be back. And like I said, it's great for us to finally get back to normal again. And with that, that ends my report.
Under the city manager's presentation this evening, we have the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Finance and Administrative Services Director Eric Millier.
Hello, good evening. So as required by state statutes, we have engaged an independent CPA firm, Baker Tilly, L.L.P., to perform a complete examination of the city's financial statements and accounts. They have concluded that the city's financial statements as of December 31st, 2020 are fairly presented in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. With us tonight is Carla Gogan from Baker Tilly, and she will walk us through the audit report. And just for reference, the talking points that she will be using were included in your packet, and so she will be speaking to those slides in your packet. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you. It is really good to be here. I said to Eric, I haven't been to the city in two years. Last year, I presented virtually, so it was really a pleasure to drive around the downtown area and to see all the wonderful development that's happening within the city. So again, I'm Carla Gogan. I'm the partner from Baker Tilly who's responsible for the financial audit. I want to start by thanking the council for engaging Baker Tilly to work with you, and the management as well. This is a large task, getting ready for the financial audit and all the various compliance aspects. And Eric and his team do a really nice job. Last year, they were, a year ago, in 2020, they were our first virtual audit as we moved into the pandemic. We still perform the audit virtually this year, but again, everything was on time and well-prepared for. So as Eric mentioned, I am going to be focusing on the reporting and insights document that is up on the screen. We also issued the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So I'll just make reference to that. As Eric mentioned, we did issue our audit opinion, which is what you engage us to do. We issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive. So tonight, this report is really broken into two sections, the first being more of the required communications. So I'll go through those, then I'll pause, and then I will move to the financial highlights. I will also reference what page number I'm on. As some of these, I will go through rather quickly. However, feel free to jump in. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. So I'm going to start on page five. The page numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner. So as your independent auditor, we are engaged to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and that is a high level of assurance. We do perform, and this is the third point, we do perform a risk-based approach audit. So we do not audit every transaction of the city. We set up an audit plan at the beginning of the audit process, and we examine a lot of the city's records. However, we also rely on certain representations. And so the rest here gives our responsibilities. One thing I do want to mention is that we are not engaged to audit the internal controls of the city. However, as a part of our audit process, we do need to gain an understanding of the control environment. So then, as I move on to page six, this lists management's responsibility, which is to prepare and fairly present the financial statements. So that's to ensure they provide us what we need to do in order to do our job, so providing us the records. The second point being, it is their responsibility to maintain effective internal controls, making sure there are the checks and balances to ensure that the information that you're getting throughout the year is accurate in nature. You do receive a sizable amount of federal and state funding, and as a result of that, a part of our work is to examine the compliance with those requirements. And so the third point here is about the city ensuring compliance with the various grant agreements and so forth, and grant dollars that you receive. And lastly, the city does provide us with written representations, and a copy of that letter is included within this document. So then, moving on to page eight, we do set up our plan at the beginning of the year, the beginning of the audit process, which is essentially almost a year-round process. And there were no significant changes to the plan that we had developed. So then, as we move on to page 10, and I'll pause here in a moment to see if there are any questions so far, but I'd like to get through just a few additional comments. So we do look at key transaction cycles and areas of significant estimates. As I move down to the bottom portion of this page, one thing we look at as significant risk is management's override of controls. So during the audit process, we ensure that we look at different things than we've looked at in the past. We ask a lot of questions. We read the city's minutes. We select samples of items to test and records to examine. So we do introduce unpredictability into the audit process. On page 11, other areas of emphasis. So these are key cycles that we look at. So we're looking at the cash and investments, receivables, disbursements, payroll, pension, other post-employment benefits. These are the key audit areas that we focus our attention on during the audit. And then I mentioned about internal controls. We do gain an understanding of the internal control environment, and we are required to put certain things in writing. So on this page, on the bottom portion, we did identify the following deficiencies that we determined to be material weaknesses. And there are three of them. The first being over information technology, which I believe this point will likely be resolved in 2021, just around unnecessary generic accounts. Munis is the, is the package that the city uses, its general ledger package to record its transactions. On the next page, page 12, is related to capital assets. We did identify some significant capital asset items that the city had not included in its capital asset listing, and that was corrected. I would note, however, though, that this does not impact any of the fund financial statement information or the general fund information that you're receiving, and how you manage your operations. And then lastly, in terms of material weakness, we did identify some significant journal entries during the audit process. And frankly, if you were to compare this to last year, a lot of them are pretty consistent in nature. There are certain things that the city engages us to do as part of the audit process. A lot of them have to do with utilities and capital assets in the utility funds. And oftentimes, that's just simply a byproduct of getting through the entire year, having all the information available, and then recording the transactions. So those are the three items related to the material weakness point. And then, as we move on to page 13, this is just a departmental control point, just, it's a common point that we have at a lot of our clients who have decentralized cash collection points. Frankly, I'm not suggesting that you change the way in which you're collecting cash. It's just more of an awareness factor that there needs to be controls and checks and balances over these items anytime you have decentralized operations. So before I go through some of the, finish my required communication remarks on page 14, and then I will move into some of the metrics information. Are there any questions so far?
Yes. Thanks for being here tonight, by the way, Ms. Gogan. I'm just looking at the list of venues we have, you know, that require money to be given over apart from a centralized place. Is that an unusually long list for a municipality of our size?
It's not. It's very common for municipalities, given your size and the various types of services that you're providing to your community, especially as it relates to parks and recreation and your enterprise funds. It's really not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, proceeding with the required communications, I think what's important to note as I go through this is there are no surprises. If there were, if there was something of concern, it would have come to your attention before this evening. But just a few things to note. On the top of the page, accounting policy. So there were no new accounting policies that were adopted during 2020. The second portion here, we list the various accounting estimates that we look at, and what management does to determine that the estimate is appropriate, and then what we do as it relates to determining that those estimates are reasonable. At the bottom of the page, as we noted, we did not have any significant difficulties in dealing with management or completing our audit. And then, as we move on to page 15, there were no disagreements with management. I'm going to come back to the uncorrected misstatement and corrected misstatements in another section of the report. No significant unusual transactions. No consultations were made with other accountants. Again, the written representations that management provides to us. We did not identify any noncompliance with laws and regulations as a part of doing our work, and we did not identify any known or suspected fraud. On the top of page 16, and this and the next page wrap up the required communications, going concern, this is more of an issue, I would say, in the private sector, where you may have a business where there's a concern that they're not going to continue to exist beyond the date of the audit report. In Wisconsin, it is not, it's prohibited by state statute for a government to file for bankruptcy. And so there are no going concern issues with the city of Beloit. Where this can come into play is at times, say, a county, an accounting-owned nursing home, where you have a nursing home on operation that maybe is heavily reliant on tax operations, which is common. And so if a government isn't able to allocate a certain amount of tax levy to its nursing home, that potential operation might cease to exist as a result. But no ongoing concern issues with the city. Group audit, we do include some financial information within your financial statements that we do not audit. So this is just making reference to that fact, and that that information is audited by other auditors. We do read their financial statements and incorporate it into yours. And if anything came to our attention that looked unusual or not properly accounted for, we would have a responsibility to bring that to your attention, but we did not. We're not aware of any relationships that would have impaired our independence. We're not aware of any related parties. And then, to the next page, page 17, middle of the page, nonattest, that really just means non-audit services. So anytime we provide a service to the city that is not an audit service, we are required under professional standard to ensure we're independent of the city. And so we do and have for years prepared the city's financial statements for the convenience of the city. They review them in detail, and we get review comments from Eric and his team. So I know they are reviewing them in detail. We do identify some adjusting journal entries, and we do do a compiled regulatory report for the city. So then, as we move on to the next page, this is really more informational in nature. There are some upcoming accounting standards that we will be working with the city on, and these would impact or have the potential to impact the city's financial statements. And then I'm going to jump to the trends section, which is on page 22. And frankly, items 22 through, or pages 22 through 25, these are really more just informational type points that we think might be of interest to our governmental clients with some links of information that you might find helpful. Certainly with the CARES Act money that was received in 2020, and now the American Rescue Plan, have some points just regarding, you know, turning to our recovery and growth and compliance with federal awards. The city is accustomed to receiving federal awards, but you will have sizable monies coming your way. And again, just some other things that we think you might find of interest. So then, moving to page 27, this is your audit team, myself, and then Jody Dobson. She oversees the enterprise funds, specifically transit, water, sewer, and storm. And then Justin Hoagland is really instrumental in executing upon the audit. So Justin is a key member of the team. And then the next section, Appendix B, this is the management representation letter that I've mentioned a few times. It's rather lengthy, but these are all the representations that management makes to us as it relates to the audit process. So I'm going to jump to page 38, and I'm going to make a few comments, then I'll pause, and then I'll wrap up my comments with the financial highlights. On page 38, we did have an uncorrected misstatement. So what this means is that basically, there was a capital, two capital items that were not capitalized in 2019, so they were capitalized in 2020. So it was uncorrected in 2019. So we, again, have a responsibility to communicate that to you. Again, I would, I would state that this did not have anything or did not influence any of the operating activity and information that you're seeing in terms of making your management decisions or the condition of, of your various operations for the year. And then pages 39 through 40, we provide, or 43, we provide very detailed, we could have summarized this for you, but these are the journal entries that we've provided primarily related to addressing an accounting standard relating to the pension plan that the city belongs to, the Wisconsin retirement system, and then a lot of it is capital assets. And the two-way communication, this is just, as I mentioned earlier, you know, as we finish the audit, we're essentially not too far from now, we'll be starting the audit. And this is just, we welcome your input and feedback. So if there are things that are of concern to you, we certainly are interested in hearing that, so that we can incorporate that into the audit process. So before I go through the audit results or the financial results in Appendix E, are there any comments or questions before I move to this next and final section? I know it's a lot of information. So as you have a chance to digest it more, I know Eric can answer a lot of your questions, and I'm happy to address any questions that you might have as well. So I'm going to focus on really three key things, one being your general fund. We're going to start with that on page 49. Your general fund is your main operating fund of the city. Then I'm going to pivot, and we're going to spend Then I'm going to pivot, we're going to spend a little bit of time on this page, and then I'll pivot, and we'll talk about the debt position of the city, and then I will wrap it up with some conversation around your enterprise funds. So your general fund is your main operating fund of the city. So it's where you have your public safety, public works, administration costs. That's all within your general fund. And what is represented on this page on the top is your general fund fund balance. So if you think of it this way, it's primarily, it's your cash and receivables, things that are fairly liquid in nature, less your payables, and things that are fairly current in nature as well. And what you have left is your equity or your fund balance in the general fund, and it's broken down into the various categories. As I was preparing tonight, I noticed that the total bar, the green line, that total, if you add up all the other green lines below, should be about 15.2 million. So it's 15.2 million compared to 2019, which is the black line of 13.5 million. So you did go up about 1.6 million or 12% in total fund balance. And you look at the middle of that page, that, it tells a little bit of a story here. The middle column is your budget, so you did adopt a balanced budget. You had about 32 million of revenues and 32 million of expenditures, and you, your actual results were, your revenues were $1.6 million higher than your expenses. So you did have a positive variance, if you will, and there's a few things that attributed to that. You did receive, as I referred to earlier, you did receive some routes to recovery money in 2020, and that was related to CARES Act funding that communities received. And much of that funding was just simply passed on to you in 2020. However, you did have a number of revenue sources that did, you can see that your variance, your revenues actual were less than budget by about 350,000. So that routes to recovery money was, was good, but you also fines were down, recreation fees were down, investment income was down. Very common, you know, and I'm sure Eric's been talking to you about that, very common in what we saw elsewhere due to the pandemic. However, what, where the real positive impact was, was expenditures, your expenditures were about $2 million less than budget. So administrative services, DPW, Parks and Rec, all, you know, constrained their spend, which resulted in an increase in fund balance of about 1.6 million. So if we move to the next page, we're often asked, well, tell me, how is that? Give me, give me a rating for that. And so at the very top of the page, it lists the city's policy, and the city does have a policy, which is listed here on the top. And so I think what's important to note is that your goal or policy is to have three months, the greater of 15% of general fund operating revenues, or three months of general fund operating expenditures. And you did have 5.2 months of operating expenditures, so you were outside of your parameters, but in a positive way. And I often say, you know, it's, it's difficult to grow fund balance, and the examples I've given in the past, it does allow for unexpected events, and usually the example I'll give is snowplow, you know, snow removal. You don't know what kind of winter you're going to have, so you want a little cushion. So if you need to cover something like that, again, you know, no one could have foreseen the pandemic. And so clearly, it's, it's a good thing to have, you know, adequate reserves, and that is something that your bond agent, bond rating agents look at as well. So the graph below just shows it a little bit different way, where it shows your unrestricted general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, and you're at 41%. So again, healthy fund balance at the end of 2020. Again, just to note, your general fund is primarily, the expenditures are primarily funded with shared revenue or intergovernmental revenues, followed by tax revenue. So then we're going to move on to page 51. So I mentioned we were going to talk about the general fund, your main operating fund. Now we're going to shift gears to your, to your debt management policy. Typically, the city, and it's very common, you use debt in order to finance long-lived assets. And that's what the graph shows below. I'll come back, I'll wrap up with the policy above, but if you look at just the graph, the black line is your debt limit. So by state statute, so you talked about doing research on state statute, if you go to state statute, you are limited to borrow 5% of your equalized value, and that is, again, consistent with government units in the state of Wisconsin. So that's the top line, and over the last five years, that's grown about 17 million or 22%. So that's positives, growth happening in your community. If you look at the green line, that represents the general obligation debt outstanding of the city. And GO debt is secured by your taxing authority, and that's why investors like it, because if you need to borrow, if you need to levy tax, you can, in order to pay off the debt service. That has stayed relatively flat over the last five years. So in terms of your policy, you do have a policy that your GO debt capacity will be limited to 3% to 3.5% of the city's total equalized value. As I mentioned, the legal debt limit is 5%. So we include the two metrics here. Your actual percentage of the legal debt limit are that 5%, you're at 53%. If we compare that to your own self-imposed limit of 3.5%, you're at 75%. And then at the bottom of the page, it just shows your debt, 51 million being your GO debt. Revenue debt is in the utilities, and this is secured by the revenue streams of the enterprise funds or the charges that, that they charge. And then just moving on to the next page, this just takes a look at, of your annual operating expenses, how much are you spending on debt service? So a metric or a comparison I'll make is, you know, a home. How much are they spending on either rent or their mortgage? You know, and usually if you're going to take out a home loan, you know, the banks are looking for certain ratios. You know, here we look around that 20% metric, you know, 20%, you know, going above, as much above, or somewhat above is not much of a concern at all. Again, you've hovered right around that, you know, 20 went up to 21%, and hovered right around that, now you're at 16%. Just means, again, your annual spend, you're spending less on debt service. So I'm going to pause there, because that concludes my comments on your governmental funds, the general fund and debt, and then I'm going to conclude with some utility remarks. But any questions on the results I've gone over so far? So then we'll move to the water utility. So as I mentioned, you have your governmental funds, which are financed primarily through grant dollars and tax revenue. Your utilities are financed through the charges. It's the, it's the bill that you get to charge you for your water usage, sewer, storm, and then of course, transit. And so there's four really categories or metrics included on this page. The water utility is a regulated utility. Wisconsin Public Service Commission regulates utilities and the rates that you charge for the water utility. And the city is currently in the process of reviewing its rates, or will be reviewing its rate structure to ensure that it's appropriate. But if you look at the first graphic, you can see, you know, revenues have been exceeding your expenses, and you have a, you know, a decent margin there. If you look down at the next metric, which is your unrestricted reserves, we like to see a minimum of three months of cash on hand, and at the end of 2020, you had just over three months. You'd like to see a bit more cash there, just so that you have some cash on hand to pay for routine items, so that you're not always having to borrow, you know, incur the interest cost, that you can pay for those routine items with cash on hand. So you're meeting the three-month minimum, but not by a significant amount. Debt coverage, we talked about revenue bonds before, and revenue bonds, as I mentioned, are secured by the charges that you charge for the service, and that's with the bondholders. They want to make sure that the utility generates certain results in order to ensure that it can pay its debt service, and you've met your debt coverage and have for the last five years. And then lastly, you can see this debt-to-equity ratio. This means that 53% of your capital assets were financed with debt. So, and a 50-50 split is not unusual, especially given that you purchased the water utility not that long ago, and to do that, you did borrow money to do that. Then moving on to the sewer utility, again, operating results at the top, this is not regulated. So you decide and you set the rates that you're charging for the sewer utility. And as you can see, the, the black line being operating expense, the green line being operating revenues, so the expenses have exceeded revenues, and likely this is due to depreciation expense. So you, you have these capital assets, you depreciate them over time or expense them over time, and that's going to be factored into that expense item, because when you look at your unrestricted reserves, you do have, whereas you had about three months of cash for water, you have about 17 months for cash for sewer. So you still can be generating cash even though your expenses are exceeding your revenues, and that's because it's non-cash expenses related to depreciation. Again, you're meeting your debt coverage ratio and have for the last five years. Again, you can see here that only 20% of capital assets are debt-financed in the utility, which, again, having those cash reserves does allow you to take care of, you know, items, routine items that would come up, so you don't have to borrow for it. And then two utilities remain, the next being storm water. The storm water utility, revenues exceeding expenses, months of cash on hand, you have almost 15 months. So again, just provides you that flexibility in funding capital assets. Again, this is an unregulated utility. It is meeting its debt coverage ratio, and in this case, 17% on the bottom of the page of capital assets, and storm are financed with debt. And then the last page is related to transit. And what's interesting to note is you'll see in the 2020 graphic here, that 60% of the revenue was a federal subsidy versus 32% the year before, and that was CARES funding that transits received all throughout the country, basically to replace lost revenue. So while the CARES Act money in 2020, in many instances, you couldn't use it for lost revenues, in this case, you were able to receive CARES Act money essentially to sustain the operations and keep transits running. So I think that's an important thing to note. And then your operating expenses down below, pretty common, the green section, very common to have 75% to 80% of expenses being salary and benefits. And you will see down at the very bottom, just excess, you know, deficiency. You know, I think transit is just, you know, one of those things where it's, you know, heavily subsidized, and that's just, you know, the reality of, of the operations in transit. Again, very common with other communities who run a transit utility. So that wraps up my remarks. Any questions, anything that I've gone over, anything I didn't go over that you wanted or had a question about?
I just, and I don't, this may be more for Eric and
Sure.
Budget, budget time when we get to it later. But, you know, it would seem that our utility fees and everything are, are well in line with our expenses, and, and we're covering that cost of our operation very well. That's the takeaway I get from looking at this. And so I don't know what that means to budget time, Eric, or anything like that, but that's one of the confusing things about seeing some of these, the depreciation issue is something that's, that's not obvious when you look at these, but as you explained, it's something that affects those numbers we see. But anyway, it's just something, I guess, looking ahead more, more to budget time than anything else.
I think it is also important when you're considering, because when you do set rates in the sewer and storm, that is usually done on a cash basis, where you are taking out those non-cash items, to really look at what are the cash needs of the utility. And a significant portion of that is also looking ahead, you know, to what are those significant initiatives that the city has in mind? And are the rates adequate to finance those future activities as well? I would say water, you know, we'd like to see a bit more there in terms of months of cash on hand, for sure.
Well, it's actually good numbers, considering we're about to go to a massive
Yeah.
upgrade and maintenance upgrade to our 30-plus-year-old sewer plant, which is desperately needed after 30, 35, 40 years, so. So, and that's the key to, that's the key to what made our gateway prosper, so we got to make sure we take care of it.
Sure. Okay. Well, thank you so much for your time tonight. Again, really appreciate the opportunity, and if anything does come up after tonight's meeting, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Under item 12, reports from boards and city officers. We continue with the Government Finance Officers Association awards.
Eric Miller.
Hello again. Yes, Mark, that is one thing we will be addressing during the budget, by the way, with the excess cash that we have on hand at the sewer utility and the water, which is precisely why we're going through the water rate study currently for the water utility.
Yeah, it's, it's all very interesting to have this now ahead of that coming up so shortly from now.
Right.
And in pretty straightforward matters.
Yep, and they do play hand in hand, for sure, so. Okay, so the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in the Financial Reporting Award, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, and to prepare comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. These certificates and awards are the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. The city of Beloit has been awarded all three of these awards for the past two years encompassing fiscal years 2018 and 2019. We will also be applying for all three of these again in fiscal year 2020. We've already received the 2020 Budget Award, but will not receive the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award or the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting until the end of the year or early next year, since those are based on the 2020 audited financial statements, which were just presented tonight. So we will be applying for that by the end of next week. The city has won the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 23 years in a row, which is submitted by our budget analyst, Jessica Tyson, and she does that after the annual budget is approved on an annual basis. The city has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the prior 18 years in a row, which I submit annually after our audit is complete. And the city has won the Popular Annual Financial Report Award for two years in a row, which is submitted by our Director of Strategic Communications, Sarah Locke, after the annual audit is complete. And I will say that the only reason we haven't achieved that one for longer is because it was brand-new two years ago, and we've achieved it both years, so. Winning all three of the awards for the same fiscal year is known as the triple crown of financial reporting, and this tremendous accomplishment is something that the city of Beloit should be very proud of. So in your packets, there were copies of all three of the awards certificates that we receive. We also receive a plaque, and we receive a token at the end of each year that sticks to the plaque for presentation purposes, so. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
We'll start with Blakely, and we'll go to four back.
And Blakely just wants to offer her congratulations to all concerned, all involved. You've done an excellent job, and we on council appreciate that, and we in the city appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And you also do a great job explaining it to those of us who are not financial professionals.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you.
As for back.
Well, how can I follow that? Eric, thanks, and I just think it's excellent that you apply for these awards. Citizens need to hear, and it's the way that they can know what we know because we get to work with you. Really, the excellence, it's one of the things I've learned as being a city councillor is. We have superb staff, and we know that by the programs, by the awards, by the reality of how things run in the city. And I do have some friends from other states who are at cities where they aren't as lucky as we are, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, you guys and your staff and everybody should be rightfully proud of your awards, but I'm really glad that you get them, because there should be an award for making Mark enjoy reading financial statements. Because if somebody had told me when I started this whole process and got on the council that I was going to, I dreaded the financial aspect of this role, and you've made it nothing but easy and fun, and I enjoy reading the materials, and I'm just astonished that I can, you know, that from the budget book through the presentations, and even the kind of presentations we get from Baker Tilly, every, these things all just seem to work very well, and I know it's because the staff is putting it together and doing such, I had no idea some of those awards went back that far.
Yeah.
They predate you.
Yeah, they do.
So I guess you can't take credit.
I can't take all the credit.
No, anyway, but I just want you to know, you guys should be proud, and I'm damn glad, so, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, thank you.
That's Counsel Duncan.
I do. I just wanted to say to you, Eric, despite the challenges, you and our finance department has exceeded the odds, and you should be very, 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 very proud of that, and I know that I am as a councillor and proud to be a councillor of Beloit. And I just want to thank you, Eric, our entire finance team, our city manager, for your hard work and leadership. It is noticed, and I just want you to know that, and we appreciate it. And it's nothing, it feels good to be on the top with the City of Beloit, and I'm proud to go around and let people know that we have an A rating, so it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? There are none, next item, please.
Continuing, will Eric Mueller show us the 2022 pre-budget overview and discussion?
Okay, all right. Finally, some budget stuff, right, Mark? Okay, so tonight is the pre-budget overview and discussion. It's the first of many steps in preparing the 2020 budget. So tonight, we're going to go through a few items. We'll address each item a little bit more in detail as we come to it, but it's just a way that we can start to get acclimated to the budget process, what you might be seeing later on in the budget as we get further into the details. And this is just a quick overview of what you might be expecting for this season. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is the state budget impacts, and it should be noted that this state budget is still evolving. It's evolving every day, actually, as things get worked out in Madison. And one of the trends that we seem to see in the governor's proposed budget was infrastructure. It seems to be a common theme this year through even the federal government, down into the state and into the locals. So there's a heavy emphasis on the infrastructure piece. In fact, the proposed budget shows a 2% increase in our general transportation aids for both the '22 and '23 budget seasons. We'll see what that number actually equates out to be based on the amount of allocation that the state provides. So it's not a simple 2% increase, but overall, throughout the state, there's going to be an increase in the GTAs. One of the things that we always look at is the shared revenue piece. That number appears to be staying about the same, which, again, I say this each year, that's good and bad news. It's good news that we get the same amount, and it's bad news that we get the same amount. It has not been increased in well over a decade, but at least we're not seeing reductions in that shared revenue piece. The initial proposed budget shows fully funding the municipal aid payment. I don't see this as making it through to the final, but it was something that would show an increase in some state aids. These are to provide payments for properties that are state-owned, that are located within the City of Beloit that we provide service to. They're currently funded at about 33%. Levy limits remain in place. We're very familiar with levy limits here. They've been around since 2005. There was a proposal that they would be increasing the minimum to 2%. They tried that a few years ago, it did not pass, so I would anticipate that it would still be 0% or the greater of net new construction. That's just the gut feeling, since there hasn't been any movement on this in 15 years. Net new construction numbers will be published in the early part of August. So we can't talk about budget without talking about the American Rescue Plan Act, of course. The original appropriation that we had seen was for $16 million, roughly. There has been some final allocations that I've seen from the Treasury. The number is closer to $15.2 million instead of 16, so it did come down a little bit, but I'm not going to complain too much. I'll still take $15.2 million. The expenditure restraint program will limit our growth in the general fund by 2.7, uh, this is my estimate, approximately 2.7%. That's the equivalent of about $940,000 of total increase. That's not just for the general fund, that's for all special revenue funds, including TIF and the library. We are estimating about a 3.6% increase in our net new construction, which is tremendous. We were 123 last year. The big thing here, of course, is the Amazon project was fully assessed in 2021, so that's what's creating the larger net new construction number, estimating about $417,000 is what that would be the equivalent to. So generally speaking, if we have a 1% increase, that would cost the city around $300,000 across all funds, not just the general fund. So it's kind of a baseline look for every 1% would be about $300,000. Some more revenue and expenditure considerations. So over the last few years, our health plan has been a hot topic. Seems like every year, we talk about our health plan. In 2021, we kept both the premium and the contribution rates the same. We are going to continue to monitor that as the budget process goes along, depending on where our claims come out to be. By all accounts, they are trending right along with budget so far for 2021, and they did very well last year in 2020. Due to the pandemic, a lot of people did not go to the doctor, so the claims experience actually helped us out in our health funds. So we're always going to be looking at plan options to see where we can reduce costs and maybe increase services if we can, and we tend to focus on that retiree health plan as that one tends to still roll into the deficit balances, but the actives have made tremendous improvements. WRS rates are pretty consistent. We have not seen those yet for 2022, they haven't been posted yet, but they would, they'll be posted here within the next probably few weeks. They stayed the exact same in 2021 at 6.75% for the general employees, and there was a slight increase in both the police and fire WRS rates, and you can see there, it's 12.69 and 17.29% respectively. And then one of our goals that we are trying to re-implement as we can would be to try to fund the vehicle replacement fund again. The more we can do that, and the more we can fund that fund, the more relief we'll have on the capital program through getting rid of vehicles out of there, and we can pay for them directly through cash on hand. Long-term goal, but I think we can, I think we can get there. So here's a slide on the tax rates that we've seen over the last five years. Fairly stable when you look at it on a five-year basis, you know, about .47 cents per thousand of assessed value difference between 2016 and 2020, pretty stable rates. I would anticipate those rates, however, coming down in 2023 after we complete our total city revaluation, which is ongoing as we speak, but the majority of that work will be done now through 2022, and those new assessed values should post in 2022, which would affect our 2023 budget season. And then here's a slide just showing where our growth on our assessed values are. The orange is the local assessed, that's the piece we're addressing now, to revalue those properties, to try to get those back up in line with the green bar. And so that's the whole concept, is to make those two numbers as equal as possible, which would then bring our assessment ratio up from 84% to 100% or 1, trying to keep those the same. That's also the number, the equalized value, that drives our capacity to borrow money, and that's why in the slide that you saw during the audit presentation, you saw that our capacity increased on one of those graphs. It's directly related to the green bar in this graph, that's showing that our equalized values have increased as well. So as part of the CIP, or the Construction Improvement Plan, we do a one-year plan for '22 and then a five-year out plan, so it's a total of a six-year plan. We tend to focus primarily on costs of over $10,000 and beyond the useful life of 10 years, that kind of meets our capitalization criteria. So we focus on those projects to fund our capital improvement plan. The funding sources, of course, this year, the new one added to the list is ARPA, the American Rescue Plan, along with our normal notes and bonds, any kind of TID increment, fund balance, grants, and federal funding or fund balance. The 2022 plan is in process. We had reviews last week, so we are already knee-deep in the budget process. We are looking to borrow somewhere between 5 and 5.5 million, which is what our normal borrowing capacity tends to be. We want to keep the debt service portion on that Baker Tilly graph, we want to keep that flat like we have been, so that we aren't having to levy more to pay back debt, because we want to keep that stable. We do try to borrow only within our policy, which is the 3.5%, as Carla had mentioned during her presentation, and of course, we do target our highest priority needs. So some of the budget objectives that we try to meet each year, definitely try to perform or put together a budget related to our strategic plan, which we will be meeting on that strategic plan at the end of July. We'll be reviewing that plan so that we can try to make sure that we're meeting those budget objectives. Qualify for expenditure restraint. It has 2023 there for a reason, because you have to keep your 2022 budget at a certain amount in order to qualify for the following year's expenditure restraint. So we're actually working to qualify for 2023's expenditure restraint. We do review our fees on an annual basis, looking at the fee schedule and bringing that to council the same night as we bring our budget. We want to try and make sure that we are capturing those costs to provide those services the best that we can, and of course, we do capture the allowable increase in the property tax levy. We want to make sure that we get every dollar that the state allows us to get under the levy limits. We don't want to leave any of that on the table and have excess capacity sitting out there that we can't utilize. We do maximize the use of those P cards. We have done that very well over the last few years. We've changed the consortium a couple of years ago, and it's paid dividends. We've done very well in the cash-back program through our P cards. We do propose a balanced budget. However, I did put a caveat in there this year saying that the use of fund balance on one-time projects. And really, what we're getting at there is that we don't want to budget fund balance on programs that aren't just one-time. We want to keep it sustainable, and by budgeting fund balance for continuing expenses is not sustainable. So you'll see that there for a reason, because we do have the revaluation, and that will be paid for primarily in our 2022 budget year. That's a prime example of where we would budget fund balance to handle that one-time revaluation cost. So you most likely will see some fund balance being applied for that particular project this year. We do look for savings opportunities and new revenue streams anywhere we can, and again, we want to do that so that we can try to fund that vehicle replacement reserve. Continue to looking, continue to look at ways to improve the health plan, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, and all of this relates back to keeping or improving on that geo-bond rating, which we did have that increased to double A minus from A plus. So some important dates that are critical, this first page is mostly to internal staff, just kind of go through when we will be meeting, when we'll be going through the budget, trying to get the final proposed budget put together, so that we can bring it back to you here on October 4th. And these are highlighted for council for a reason, so that those are important dates that you guys can take notes of. We will be back here on the 4th to present the proposed budget. A week after that, we have our council workshop, and then a week following that, we'll be back here again for our public hearing, and then two weeks after that, we'll present that for consideration for approval on November 1st. That's pretty standard calendar that we followed for many years, so shouldn't be anything too out of the norm. So with that, that concludes my pre-budget presentation. Again, this is just the first step, so we'll have, you know, plenty of time, but if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Counsel Prashil.
I just want to point out, in your calendar list here, we, I don't see the strategic planning workshop that's scheduled for the 24th of July. So that's, I think I've got it here for 10 to 4. I don't know exactly if that's right or not. Sometimes I put these things in with pretty wide ranges, but that's a Saturday, July 24th is the plan, strategic planning workshop. I know I had to mention that to a couple of people in emails that they sent, asking for the deadline for suggestions and stuff, and I said that would be a good deadline to get it to us as councillors, and to staff, for that matter, so that there's something they can, like the week ahead of that, so they have time to put it together and find a place for it in our workshop agenda, because that's when we, that's when the bulk of that discussion will take place. So, anyway, I just want to point that out. Thank you.
And it's at the library community room, I believe.
Counsel Blakely, then Duncan, then foreback.
Okay, thank you. Eric, I just found myself confused by state-owned properties within the City of Beloit.
Yeah.
Could you just mention a couple examples of those?
I think the Rest area is one, and the Armory? Armory? Is that on right? Armory something?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, the Armory.
Oh, good. Now that I have those examples, I have a way to think about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it. Yeah, you're welcome.
Counsel Duncan.
Oh, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Counsel Prashil said. I know he talked about the strategic. I'm going to make sure I'm on. I know Counsel Prashil talked about the strategic planning session on July 24th, on that Saturday, but I also wanted to mention, you had it on the screen, about the public hearing where the public can be involved in the budget process, and that was on October 18th. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Counsel foreback.
Yes, I have a question. I perhaps should know this.
Yeah.
But I don't. How often do we have a total reevaluation?
Uh, well, it's not frequent, let's just put it that way. I think the last time we had a total revale was around 2009, 10-ish. There are rules that if you fall outside of a certain assessment ratio for too long of a period of time, then you would be required to have a complete revale. And we're in that range right now, but we haven't been out of that range for the length of time needed before the state would basically come in and make you do it. We had already planned to do it, so, you're welcome. So, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Looking forward to that workshop in October.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Item 12C is consideration of Resolution 2021-90, approving a cooperative agreement between the City of Beloit and the Ho-Chunk Nation for the Colley Road and Willabook Road Raze Grant Project.
City Attorney Griger?
If I may just combine the report for 12C and 12D, you'll have to take separate action on them, but I'll just speak once to them, if that's okay. The Ho-Chunk and the city are going to be, or in requesting approval tonight, to apply for a Raze grant. That is a federal discretionary grant program. You'll recall that in prior years, we've applied for the Tiger Grant and for the Build Grant, so this is a new name grant that will help us with infrastructure costs over there in the Willabook-Colley-Milwaukee Road area. So the first item is to agree to a cooperative agreement, which will help the Ho-Chunk tap into some transportation dollars, that they can assist the City of Beloit in meeting that local match requirement that'll make our grant application more successful, or we hope to be more successful this year. So the first item is a cooperative agreement. The second item is just approval to apply for the grant, which is our standard requirement for grants that are not included in our budget. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
First with item 12C. Can we get a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Duncan, second by Pruschel. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And 12D would be consideration of Resolution 2021-91, authorizing and supporting the City of Beloit's 2021 Raze Grant application.
Your motion to approve?
I so move.
Moved by Levy, second by Blakely. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And the final item would be adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
So.
Moved by Pruschel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Duncan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everybody.